Alrighty, good morning, everybody. We're gonna re- look through the reopening survey results. I'm gonna start with the summary here on my screen, just so you have a sense of who responded. We had 183 responses from ages 18 all the way up to 65 plus those categories. The overall returning under the current plan that was presented in that email, 55% said they're not ready to return yet, and 45% said they are. What that boils down to is, in each age category, with the exception of 45 to 54, actually 45 to 54 and 55 to 64, and that's right, yeah, that's right. 45 to 54 and 55 to 64, excuse me, 55 to 64, majority of them do want to return. Every other age category, the majority did not want to return yet. 44 people want to return on June 28th. Participating online services, this was good news for us. 155 of those 183 respondents said they're participating in online services. Satisfaction with the support and resources currently receiving from St. Luke's. An overwhelming majority, 115 plus 48, were very satisfied or satisfied. The total for neutral is 20. 20 people were neutral or left it blank. One person was very unsatisfied. During the pandemic, how is God moving you to connect with God each other in St. Luke's on the lake? Majority of the people said virtual only, followed closely by both in-person and virtual. So that's kind of the snapshot of those basic questions we had you answer, just so you have an idea. So 55% said they're not ready to worship yet or come back together yet, and 45% said they are. Again, of those who wanted to come back, June 28th was the ideal date, so as soon as possible. And then people are very satisfied at the moment, so we're very happy about that. Alrighty, Nancy, am I going to not willing other line 20?
You sure are.
Okay.
Yes.
So these are, this is if, correct me if I'm wrong, Nancy, this is somebody who said they're not ready to come back to worship, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna read you this.
If not, why not? And basically, the question was, under what circumstances would you be willing to return? Some people selected widely available vaccines or widely available treatments for COVID. And then if those two weren't the answer, then other was the choice, and this is what somebody wrote.
Yeah, and the reason I'm gonna read this one, and it's important y'all know, I'm gonna read different answers along the way, is I'm gonna read answers that capture a whole lot of people's ideas. This one, most everybody else had one or two things mentioned in this long answer. So just know that, but this person named most things, and I'll respond to each one as I'm able, as I've done the last two sessions. So this was, they checked other. I disagree with several of the imposed restrictions. One, wearing mask required, no social gathering, or two, no social gathering, no coffee served, two incense gathering, basically no community at the church. Three, regulating those who need to use the bathroom to upstairs only. This will become increasingly problematic for those that need to go. Four, attendance capped at 75. Five, no separate children's program. How do you build a program if you have no Sunday children's program? Six, no congregational singing. Again, this lessens the entire community aspect of worshiping together. Seven, no elevator access. How does this meet legal standards of public spaces? Eight, overall disappointed with the amount of restrictions being implemented. I'm also concerned for everyone's health and safety, but feel the measures that St. Luke's wants to implement are an overreach. So I've tried to stay consistent in responding to this, but again, this is a great, I'm glad, I'm so thankful for everybody who filled out the survey and put it out there. And I'm really thankful for that. This captures a lot of different sentiments that were shared. Some people mentioned just mask only, everything else was fine, didn't want to wear masks. Some were worried about the no social aspect with coffee or gathering. Some were worried about why our sanctuary can only potentially hold 75 people. This one's unique in that it mentions children's programming, but I think that's strictly because not everybody thought about that, because this was so focused on worship, but I'm thankful that they mentioned children. And then some folks have mentioned no congregational singing, that's come up in these previous calls. So mask, right now, the best guidance we have coming out of the White House and the CDC says we all need to be wearing masks. We are all acutely aware that a lot of people, as of early May, threw the mask out the window as if this thing ended overnight. And they've moved away from any kind of social distancing, and it's not just the protests, and it's not, I mean, this, if we're honest, folks, most of this planet and this country stopped doing everything they were supposed to do the minute we started quote-unquote reopening. So, and what are we seeing now? We're seeing a surge in cases again, and it's just gonna continue to happen if we don't start to behave. But the mask, what the masks do, according to the CDC and the White House, and the reason they want, and the governor's office here, they want us to wear masks is to keep the aerosols down to a minimum. Then when we're talking and singing, we can spread it a lot further than six feet. We're essentially human sprinklers, and it's kind of gross to think about, but it's the reality of who we are and what we do. So the mask is to lessen that threat. I will remind you, way back early in this pandemic, there were choirs still trying to sing being six feet apart, and whole choirs went down with COVID-19. In some cases, some of the choir members died, just as a reminder to us of how much we can spread. And the mask is meant to help us do that. And let me just pause before I go to the next one, and let you know that a lot of these things you're seeing now are hopefully the beginning. The more knowledge we get, the more, the more science is behind it, the more I think things will change and evolve in terms of quote-unquote protocols, or if you view them as restrictions. I don't expect what we, how we start to reopen in worship to look the same even a month later, or two months later, or three months later. I think a lot of our life will depend upon how we behave outside of church. And church, we will always be a place, I've been very clear about this, that lifts up the health and safety of the most vulnerable. That is about the own, the major, the most major part that we can play by being the church. Now, we could pray for everybody, and we can do church, we can come together and worship, but by being the church means we put the most vulnerable out in front, and we're gonna be a place that sets a good example for other institutions. So we're gonna wear masks, those are not gonna be optional. If someone doesn't show up with a mask, then we will have some available, and if they refuse to wear it, we will encourage them to join our virtual worship service. At that point, there's a firm line there. You'll be asked to join us online until you're comfortable, until we don't have to wear masks anymore, which I suspect will happen at some point, as we learn more and know more. And I'll get to why I think that'll happen, because something changed even from what you read. We eventually may get to coffee, but in the beginning, we're just focused on getting in the building, getting this right, and then getting out, because what people seem to be more hungry for is coming together to receive the sacrament. So the community aspect will be limited, because we need to keep the distancing, and we need to get people in and out safely, and we need to be able to clean in between all the services. We're not necessarily gonna regulate if you need to use the bathroom. What we are gonna do is, the services themselves will be shorter, and this is the hardest part I've noticed for the last several weeks, not just on the last two calls. Worship that you remember in February, it's not the worship you're going to see when we reopen. It will look very different. We're not gonna have a 7:45, a 9:00, and 11:15. The worship styles and music as it stands now, for the sake of getting things somewhat streamlined from a technological standpoint, because that's gonna be a big part of how we worship, are gonna look the same. So whether you come to 9:00 or you come to 11:15, you're gonna get the same service. And that's how it's gonna be, at least initially. Now, as we develop people to help with the technology side, so it's not all riding on essentially one person's shoulders, and that person is Brad Powell, we can start to imagine different styles of music and start giving the services their unique identities again. And there's other issues around why we're not adding all our services back. You're a two-clergy church with contact tracing that the White House has encouraged us to do, and the CDC. If someone tests positive and Jim is in the service, then Jim has to sit out and monitor his symptoms for up towards 14 days, or me. So if the same person happens to overlap both of us, because we want to have a lot of services, then we're both, you lose both your clergy, and we're trying to how, we're trying to figure out how to do services from our house. So that's the nature of that. Attendance capped at 75, that's my best guess, it could be less, it could be more. We're measuring the pews, skipping pews, trying to create six feet amongst groups of people. To give you an idea, St. Matthews, who has a pretty large sanctuary, they did their measurements, and they have chairs, they don't have pews, they have chairs, and they can only get 50 in their sanctuary from a socially distant perspective. Children's programming, that's temporary. As we get worship back up and running, then we'll, we'll look at creative ways to engage our children in a safe environment as well. Congregational singing, this has always been, it's been a sticky widget for some. Right now, that's just where we're at. We're just gonna continue to, to listen to music, have visuals in the service, and keep that, again, that singing down to a minimum to try to stop the spray. I know it, I know it's terrible, our bishop doesn't like it, but again, we're taking the best guidance. And I will remind you that Greg Abbott's office has been consistent from day one, and all their guidelines, as different things have reopened, at the top of his list for churches, he has maintained point number one, if you can continue virtually, continue virtually. So even as he's opened up at 25%, 50%, 75%, coming out of his office, he has reminded us that virtual is best, which only reminds me, we're not gonna do virtual forever, but it just reminds me that there is a lot of science around how difficult it is. And I think Greg Abbott's also aware of all the churches that have opened, ahead of Texas churches, and now have subsequently had to close, because they became clusters of COVID-19. In some cases, people died. Obviously, one of the most dramatic instances was close to home in Houston. The Catholic Church, where the priest passed away, and 72 members of the congregation were all infected from one service. So this is a real thing. No elevator access, that's not an issue, we're good with that, because you can park upstairs, and all are handicap spots. You do not, there is no reason for anybody to park in the lower lot. You can park in the upper lot, and you can park in the handicap spots right out front, and access the building, and access everywhere you need to access during this particular phase. So the elevator's not, not needed. And disappointed, totally get it, you're not alone. There are people who are disappointed, there are people who are encouraged, I get it. And I have said this in the last call, and I think I said it the call before that, that I know the decisions that the vestry and I make, not everybody's gonna be happy. I've always been acutely aware, since I've been a rector, that it's not a popularity contest. But the best thing I can do for you as your pastor is be clear about where we're headed and what we're doing, knowing that many of you will agree with it, and many of you will disagree with it. But that together, we'll get through it, and hopefully you'll see the spirit in what we're trying to do to keep everybody, create the safest environment possible. Ultimately, if I could, I'd have everybody back tomorrow, we'd all be hugging on each other, loving on each other, and that's the church I know, and that's the church I came to a year ago. That's just not where we're at right now, but we'll get there. This is not gonna be forever, so don't be discouraged. And even in the beginning, I suspect as we evolve, that the restrictions and protocols will evolve as science evolves and understanding evolves. Here's a good example. In the survey, in the plan, we mentioned that if someone tests positive, we have to go back 14 days. The CDC and the White House have since updated that with science, okay? This is where science has caught up, we only need to go back 48 hours. It still helps, but it still makes things complicated, but we only have to go back 48 hours from the onset of symptoms. So that's a change, and I expect those changes to happen every week or two weeks, as they learn more, as more studies come back from all the countries around the world, and all the scientists that are studying this. So that's a big change in terms of community tracing and contact. And again, I expect that to keep happening. Okay, Nancy, where do you want me to go next?
Row 29 on the same sheet, it's a good segue regarding contact tracing.
Oh, contact tracing. This person asked transparency about what St. Luke's will do with the contact tracing information, and who it will be shared with. Will St. Luke's keep this information strictly for its own purposes, or share it with Travis County, City of Austin, etc., or the church hierarchy, which they mean the diocese? And what's their privacy policy? So first of all, if you tell me you test positive for COVID-19, that stays with me, Jim, or Nancy. So the rector, the assisting priest, or the chief of staff. And the, us three will then look at where, what services you attended, if it overlaps that 48-hour window, and then we will notify those services, not who you are, but we'll just say someone has tested positive. Phase two guidelines put out by the CDC and the White House suggest that you now self-quarantine. Again, I'm not gonna enforce it, I hope that you do, and monitor your symptoms for 14 days. Contact your doctor if you need to. That's all that's gonna happen, we're not gonna, we are not required as of yet. Now, again, this could change, but as of yet, we are not required to let the Health Department know, the City of Austin know, the state know. We would strictly just let people who worship with this individual know that they tested positive, and then what the CDC, as we live into phase two, what, what they recommend. Now, I can't predict if it's gonna change, but I'm imagining if Texas cases keep skyrocketing, they may ask us as an institution to report, but they have not yet. And there's no indication that they will, they just could. So we, there is, that information stays with your two priests and your chief of staff, so that we can do the appropriate contacting of people who attended the service. Alrighty, Nancy, where do you want me to go next?
Let's see. Let's talk a little bit about online worship in general.
So people have seemed to.
Row 79.
Okay, row 79.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, people seem to be enjoying our online worship, which is good. We have a good viewership, we have a good retention rate. Our analytics look good for our services compared to our peers here locally and outside of Austin. So I'm very proud of that. One of the things that COVID-19 has done for us is it's thrust the church, which we're always kind of slow to, to evolve in terms of technology and change. I'm not gonna make the Episcopal joke here, y'all can make the joke. But this put us five years ahead of the curve in terms of technology. So as we move to reopen, and long after COVID-19 is over, we will continue to have online, an online presence. We will continue to record and then upload the Sunday service, and make it available as quickly as we can in the morning at a set time, so that people can join us online for worship at St. Luke's. We will have the equipment to do that, it's just a part of the future, and it's something we should have been doing, honestly. And I don't mean St. Luke's, I mean, we, the Episcopal Church, we, a lot of Christian churches should have been doing years ago, is, is creating, is figuring out ways to engage with folks in the different ways that we create community. And one of the ways we create communities, community is on our online platforms. And let me just do this plug for you. And this is kind of funny about Episcopalians, usually when you say evangelism to a group of Episcopalians, they get a little scared. You now have the easiest way to evangelize as you've ever had in your entire existence as Episcopalians. All you have to do is take our service link and share it on any social media page. You can even email it to somebody and say, "Join St. Luke's for worship." This is ultimately how we picked up people from Minnesota to Massachusetts, to Wichita, Kansas, and elsewhere, is because we have, people have shared the service link. So I encourage you to do that. It's a great tool, and it's easy for Episcopalians when we don't like to do that evangelism thing as, as directly as some of our Protestant brothers and sisters. So that's one simple way you could do it, is share it out on your social media platforms, or email it to folks, and let people take part in the, in the service. Okay, where are we headed next, Nancy?
Go to the last tab. How would you finish this sentence? When COVID-19 is no longer a threat, I will feel deeply proud of St. Luke's and my role here if. Row 32.
32, that's right, I was gonna say, where's that pretty one that kind of sums it up? Alrighty, this is what someone said, how would you finish this sentence? I'm not gonna reread what Nancy just read, they said, "We would finish it this way. Everyone comes back with a great attitude and understanding that St. Luke's did everything they could to keep us safe. I will not look back, I will only look forward to the future. I will not wish for the way things used to be, but will look forward to whatever God has in store for us, and I will accept the recommendations and decisions of the staff and leadership at St. Luke's without criticism or negativity." This was somebody in the 55 to 64 age range, and the reason I read is I love it, but it captures, a lot of people put one line, that was one part of that statement. This one captured a lot of people's sentiments in one complete statement. So I was very humbled by this particular response on the survey. These were very, very well thought out, and it just reminds me of how much people love their church and are connected to St. Luke's. And clearly, I know some people wrote the, wrote wonderful responses here that I assume, based on their response here, were probably frustrated with some of the protocols that we have to put in place, but still see the bigger picture, and I think that's always been a testament to St. Luke's, and I'm thankful for that. So that's that. So I think what I'm gonna do now, Nancy, if it's okay, so I'm gonna open it up for questions.
Yes, let's do that.
Okay, I'm gonna unmute everybody, and then I'm gonna mute you again, but you'll be able to unmute yourself. And what I'd ask you to do, is I think everybody's on my one screen, is raise your hand or let me know you have a question. You can also use the chat function, if you're familiar with that, and I can answer questions there as well. Hold on one second, you're gonna all hear each other. Okay, anybody have a question? You wanna raise your hand, or you can raise your hand virtually by using those three dots under the participant page, or you can raise your hand, and I will answer, or the Morleys. You can unmute yourself, Ann and David Morley.
Just a quick question, you mentioned our peers with respect to, to virtual technology and all of that, and I just was curious kind of what that peer group is.
So that peer group is all the Austin Episcopal churches, and a lot of the Dacysan Episcopal churches, and then my friends who are rectors around the country, who have tuned into our service and have been impressed with what we're doing. And just the creative way to keep people engaged. And one of the things I think is powerful about the way we're thinking about worship is it's the same way the Orthodox Christians have thought about worship from day one. And that is, if you go into an Orthodox church, and some high churches, not just Orthodox churches, they're hit, it's a sensory, you live into the mystery, and it's ritualized, and they're hitting your senses, you know, they have incense, and they have visuals in terms of icons, and they have sound and bells, so they're trying to hit as many senses as they can hit for you to have a full worship experience. So I think Brad, single-handedly, along with Ann Morley now, who helps pull the photos together, David, in case you didn't know, the wife there is helping do that, pull together the photos, have created, helped us create that experience, which, when you're worshiping, looking at a screen, right? We want to make sure you stay engaged. And there are plenty of churches, someone reminded me this on a call before, and I totally get it. And it works for some. Some people can stay engaged watching a singer sing on the screen. Not everybody can, and a lot of churches that have singers singing on screens, their, their retention rate is much lower than ours. But what I think Brad and Ann have brought to the table is images around the music to keep us engaged. So when I look at that peer group, David, we have a higher retention rate compared to their online service analytics. Most of them, at the best, they get what appears to be people tuning in for the sermon and leaving. That's based on their retention span, where ours runs around 30-some minutes, theirs runs around 12, or less, some it's only five. So. Who else? Who else has a question? Anybody, just, just raise your hand. Alan, are you about to ask a question?
No, I had my thumb over the, the deal, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay.
My fault.
Oh, you're fine. Oh, Patty, you can unmute yourself, Patty. Carol, hold on one second, Patty Peacock first, then Carol Harper second. Patty, go.
How do you expect the personality of St. Luke's to change or be different after COVID-19, sorry? And what can we do to affect that?
That's a great question, it's one I've given thought to. I don't know if I have a good answer for you yet, Patty, because I think it's evolving right now. I think we're still, I'm still learning. I think St. Luke's, on the one hand, will be more resilient, I think will be open to changing more. I think all of Christianity is gonna be open to change more, I think will be open to creative ways of gathering. I, one of the tangible things I think will happen, that this is done, that's a positive after COVID-19 for St. Luke's, is the virtual formation offerings in the evenings, which we're gonna, this week you'll get some information about some upcoming ones. Before COVID-19, it was really hard to get to St. Luke's, either driving at night, traffic, just the time it would take to get to this part of town, considering a lot of our people live further away than Steiner Ranch. I think one of the tangible things we'll be able to do is do nightly, or not nightly, but evening formation opportunities that people can easily attend, and not have to worry about traffic. They can be at home, if they have children, the children can either be, be already, hopefully be put to bed. If it's like my child, go to bed, then we have formation. So I think we'll be able to do that. But on the bigger, the bigger answer to your question, I think is evolving. I think we'll know, we'll know a lot about how this is gonna transform us, and one of the things I'm already seeing is resiliency from the majority of St. Luke's folks, they're hanging in there, they realize that this is not gonna be forever, that we're gonna have to do this, this is important. And I think that's a real testament to a church, God, a church has to be resilient to really have a chance. Other than that, I think it's kind of to be determined. I think the real question mark, Patty, if I may be brutally honest, for every church, is when a vaccine comes online, or this is kind of behind us, do we all immediately rush back to 2020 February? Or, as that person said in that last comment, do we look to the future and look back and see what we've gained from this as a church, and live into the future and bring these things forward? It's the same question the church had to ask itself during World War II, had to ask itself during the Spanish Flu, do we go backwards or do we go forwards? And that's where time will tell. I think some churches will go backwards, and some churches will continue to move forward. I tend to think St. Luke's will continue to move forward and embrace the things that we learned. I feel pretty confident about that, but I can't say I feel confident about every congregation, not just in the Episcopal Church, but also outside the Episcopal Church, that everyone's gonna be able to do that. So I think, again, it's time will tell how we, because the church is the people, the church is at this building. So how's the church gonna behave into the future and embrace what God may be calling us to, and what we've learned in all of this? This is a great big discernment process, this whole journey we're on. I think, as early church fathers remind us of, God gives us, we have an opportunity to embrace different experiences as a way of learning God more deeply and learning each other more deeply. And I think that's where we have, we have to decide if we're gonna do that or not. And I think St. Luke's is, again, I do think we're doing that, so we'll see. Great question, did I answer both parts?
Well, not, not exactly. I'm gonna paraphrase the second one. So, and what you said was what I was hoping, but the second one is basically, how can we participate in making sure, which we can't make sure, but whatever the phrase is for that, in, in contributing to the, the positive moving on? What, what can we do right now, those of us who are, are here today, or, you know, talk to people? What could we do to influence the moving on to be positive?
I think, I think part of what we have to do, and I think some of you did it in the survey, I think some of you've done it in your small groups, one thing that we all have to do is we have to mourn and grieve. Uh, one thing that we all have to do is we have to mourn and grieve what we think we've lost. We need to give ourselves permission to do that because whether we like this or not, you have lost some things. Once we can do that work, then, uh, then what you can help me do is then you can embrace what you're growing and what you're learning and how we're evolving. Uh, but essentially what I'm asking you to do, Patty, is stay engaged. Stay engaged, stay open to the ideas, open to the plans that we present to you, that we hopefully can work on some together. Keep an open mind. Uh, imagine, help me evangelize using these digital platforms and digital means. Help me evangelize. This is how we'll move into the future. Uh, this is how we'll embrace, uh, a new reality. Open-mindedness, uh, creativity and, uh, and, and really living into this moment. Make sure we live into this moment now and bring others along. So, all right, Carol, I'm going to switch over. Where did Carol Harper go? Did I lose her? Uh-oh. Oh, no, there you are. Sorry, you moved on my screen. Go for it, Carol, you can unmute yourself and, uh, there you are.
I just wanted to, to make, here I am. I just wanted to make a comment on the service bulletin and how helpful that is. And I don't know who's putting it together, but I wanted to thank them for it. And I think it is very helpful.
It's Jim Cook. He's putting it together. He's doing a fantastic job.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's been very helpful. I, I have enjoyed using it.
Actually, it's Nancy Phillips. She's the one, uh, putting it together. I mean, there are so many different people making different things happen. Brad, of course, on the technology front, Nancy on the bulletin front, Barbara on the communications front, keeping up to date, posting the services, keeping the bulletins posted and fresh, our announcements fresh. Uh, there's many hands that are making light work here.
I think they're doing a great job, and I just wanted to congratulate them, thank them for it, not congratulate, but just thank them for it.
Thank you.
And as far as any changes that we, we only have the moment to live in. And any kind of changes that we make right now going forward are not permanent necessarily. If they're things we don't care for and aren't happy with, they can always be changed. And so people shouldn't get so uptight because there's change, because there have always been change. If we don't have change, then we don't make any kind of progress in this world. So that's hopefully my positive thought for the morning.
Thank you, Carol. And I will piggyback on that to say, I think what people long for in this, early on in this pandemic from their church and what they're longing for, and I'm acutely aware of this, there's probably two main reasons people want to come back to worship. One is they miss their friends and their community. And two, they're looking for something that's settled in a constant and a, and what's an ever-changing world right now. I mean, every aspect of life has been turned upside down. So I think, uh, people are longing, so I'm acutely aware of that, and I agree with you, Carol, completely. And I'm glad you said that. Uh, and I think that's just the other side of that is I think people are longing, the church is their safe place. It's, it needs to be. I want to be able to come to church. I want to be able to come to my 7:45, want to be able to come to my nine, I want to be able to come to my 11:15. So to only hear that the church isn't going to be exactly the same and that constant safe place where my friends are, it's hard. But, you know, it, it's where we are and we're going to get through it together. Even if we're not able to hug each other, we are still very much connected to one another. And even if we try not to be connected with one another, which Christians have done for years, hundreds of, hundreds of years, thousands of years, we're still all in the body of Christ, as Paul says. So just find that second cousin in the body that needs a, a reminder to come back to Jesus and just bring him back. All right, who else? Who else has any questions, comments? You can unmute yourselves if you're not somebody I can see the camera on. Anybody have any question? Oh, I got one in the chat. Let's see. Calling shut-ins and those who aren't connecting virtually. So I, um, one of the things that's happened is our pastoral care team, which I am so thankful for Scott Grant, Diane Brace, and Lynn Cook for leading this effort with the, uh, Community of Hope lay chaplains, have called every single person on our rolls. Uh, and then furthermore, I'm very proud of Deb O'Neil and the Eucharistic visitors who, and they've done that twice, by the way. Patty Peacock reminded me they've called twice. Deb O'Neil and the Eucharistic visitors continue to call those folks, uh, as part of their Eucharistic visits each week. They make contact to our shut-ins. So we are trying to find ways. And then Jim, Jim Cook, folks, this is Jim's daily life. He just grabs the directory and starts calling people. It's an awesome gift. So we are calling, uh, and keeping in touch, and I'm calling folks as well. Try to do a lot of calling in the car, uh, as I continue to move back and forth from one house to another. It's a lot of time in the car. So I've been making a lot of calls as well. So we're trying to, and I, I think Jim and I both are focusing on people we, we, before COVID-19, didn't see much of, who we were worried are going to be lonely. Uh, and I'm very proud of Ralph Weston and the Bissetts at Longhorn. They have done a fantastic job of keeping that community intact and engaged with us. And we've been able to support them in that work since they are under, as many retirement homes are, under quarantine. And I suspect, again, some of them have opened up to being, allowing residents to visit with folks in common lawn spaces. I expect if our cases in Texas continue to rise, that the first communities that are going to feel it will be our retirement communities that, where they will go back under essentially a lockdown. And they won't even be able to go to the green spaces and meet family. So it's a very lonely and isolating event. So I'm thankful for everybody who's helping make, uh, making connections there. Great question. What else? Anybody else? Hey, buddy. Hey, Peggy. That's what we call Zoom bombing right there. She just kind of walked in and just plopped right down there.
I, I hope, but it's acceptable. I've been kind of listening and, um, I'm just going to make an observation and, uh, based on what I've heard. Hi, everybody. Sorry I look like this, but, um, uh, I've, I've been talking to my children about what's going on. They're adult children, but yet, uh, you still have to have this conversation. And none of us really, um, we're built, we all feel pretty insecure right now. And, um, and I think that it changes from moment to moment because the science is changing and the, the data is, is kind of informing us more about what to expect and whatnot. So it's natural to feel confused and it's natural to feel out of control and wondering what next. So I, I'm just going to simply say that what you're choosing to do is to be abundantly cautious. No one can fault you for that. And I just, I appreciate that. Because that's kind of what we're doing with our children. I mean, we'd love to have our daughter come from California. We would have loved to have it two months ago. And, um, and so, uh, we're all making sacrifices to be safe. And that's really your, you mentioned that was your priority, especially those people that are most vulnerable. And, and I just want to applaud you for that and encourage you to keep that in mind. That's, that's it. Hope that's not too bad.
Thank you. Thank you, Peggy. And I will say, uh, your vestry had, at last month's meeting, had a very powerful conversation about this. And ultimately, I would say they left that meeting with a, uh, an absolute majority on the vestry, uh, wondering if all the effort to reopen at this particular moment, it makes a whole lot of sense. Uh, or if, or allow the science to do a little more work over the summer and then, uh, make a, make a more informed decision later. And I, and I value that, and I, I think they were very clear too about creating the safest. We can't guarantee 100% safety. There's always going to be personal responsibility, but we, as an institution where you're going to spend upwards of 45 minutes in close proximity to each other, we have to look at things differently than HEB does or Lowe's or Home Depot, where you're passing by, passing by people. Even restaurants, to some degree, uh, have to look at things similarly as we do. But again, there, they also have other factors that, that are come to bear on, on their decision-making as well that are important. So, so thank you, Peggy, that we are, we are going to continue to think about safety. I think when Jesus said, go and love your neighbor, this is one of the ways we do it, whether we like it or not. Whether we even like our neighbor, this is how we love our neighbor, uh, as we, we, we put our, ourselves aside and look at the bigger picture of connection. Which Patty Peacock, going back to your question way back when, that's the other thing I've noticed about St. Luke's during all this is people are loving each other and they're loving their neighbor, and that's important. This is the first church I've been in an election year where people aren't ripping each other apart. This is awesome. Maybe it's because we're not together. I don't know. It's great. So everybody's loving each other. This is good. This is good. And that's, that's a testament to St. Luke's too. So I'm happy about that. Anybody else? Kirk?
Hey there. Hey, everybody. Happy Sunday. I just, I think Peggy's point's a great point to end on, but I was going to comment on and just thank you all for whether it's Jim having to change his mic in the middle of the service or other little, uh, communication, um, concerns or issues. I think both y'all have done a good job because there really haven't been as many as they were in the first couple of weeks. So thank you for that. And the work behind the scenes to try to get that to be as smooth as possible. I know, I know when the audio goes out for both y'all, it's got to be like, what? So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, having the microphone go out on you, on, on a live stream, uh, service is no different than a acolyte tripping and falling during an in-person service. There's always going to be something that happens and you just got to realize it's going to be okay. You just don't, you just keep your head about you and move on to the next thing. So one thing I wanted to say was that I've been a priest for 30 years and accustomed to going to church on Sundays multiple times, having services. This is hard, I think, also, I, I maybe I was thinking for Justin as well, this is hard for us as well. This is, you know, we look forward to being with you all and seeing you all and hugging you and sharing, uh, information, gifts with, with each other. And so this is, uh, really hard for us as well. And I hope you, and, and, and so no one wants to get back to in-person worship more than I do. But I also want you to be safe. I don't, I don't want to bring a, a virus to any of you. Cause I care, I hardly know you, but I already care about you. So it's, it's, it's hard all the way around. It's hard, hard all the way around. So.
I agree. I second that. It is very hard for us. This is not what we, they did not give us a seminary class on being a priest during a pandemic and how to, how to do that. So on the one hand, I know someone told me one time, they said, I, I'm so jealous that you actually get to go into our sanctuary. And I said, yeah, it's nice to be in the sanctuary, but it's not the same without all of you. It's like I'm going to a set, to a stage, uh, to, to, to lead worship, which I, I believe is a good thing. It's just, it, but it takes a different kind of preparation mentally to, to do that. So it is, it is, it is difficult. And Deborah Ash, I'm glad you mentioned the music. That is something that we have, uh, looked at, uh, and not all the praise band stuff has, uh, music in the form that you're referring to with the parts. Uh, but I'm, I am sure we will, uh, continue to explore that and where we can, we'll try to do what we can do to help that situation. You're not alone in that. That's probably the number one thing I've heard over the last 10 years on praise music is, uh, from folks who really want to sing along with it, who aren't familiar with it, is can we get it in the parts? Some of that stuff is, I contacted one of the singers of, so this is a tangent, uh, singers of one of the songs. I said, I said, how can I get your music? This was back when I was in Florida. I said, how can I get your music in a form that my choir can sing? And he said, what's that? I know, like the staff and the, he said, what are those? Oh, boy. Well, there we go. So what ended up happening is our, our organist, uh, transposed and, and used a software and put all our repertoire into the, uh, into the musical bars. There. Yes, Deborah, you, you raised your hand.
We don't even need parts or than just the melody because many of us aren't familiar with those songs.
Yeah.
Especially praise songs. I know zip zilch none of praise song pretty much. So I'm just kind of sitting there going, well, I wish I could sing, but yeah. But it's, it's good to have music, whether you can sing along or not. I'm grateful for every little bit we've got, really.
Good. Peggy Kleeman, were you about to say something?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
It has to do with the renewal music. When John and I were very much involved in that several years back, uh, we did retreats and taught, taught, uh, healing and stuff like that, uh, at different churches. And we could not print a lot of them because in the renewal music, at least most of those things, there's a lot of really tight, uh, copyright laws. So you can't print that music. Uh, and that's, we came across that many times where we could only put the words up because we couldn't, we couldn't post the, uh, the music itself. That's just our experience with that. And I know Don runs into that problems too, uh, with certain songs, he can't print them. So he stays away from them.
It's, it's, it's something we'll, you know, we'll continue to work on and look at as we're able, for sure. All right, one final question, and then we're going to wrap up. Anybody have a final question I need to answer? Kirk?
If nobody else has one, uh, Jim, you mentioned something the other day during one of the services that said it was such a beautiful glorious morning. If you could see what I'm looking at, is there an easy way that you could show what we're used to seeing on Sundays? Maybe at some point during the service, the, the beautiful lake and the sky behind it? And for others that are attending virtually that don't know or haven't been able to, you know, see the beauty of that?
I would defer to either Brad or Justin, how we make that happen.
Don't pass that buck up to me. I don't even know how to do that.
I have an answer.
Oh, Nancy does.
Uh, the current setup that we have is, uh, we only have two fixed cameras. So in order for us to show anything besides the altar and the, um, the lectern where the reader stands, we need more equipment. We are working on that, but we don't have it yet.
It's just a night.
And that will, um, that will also address a question that others have expressed about being able to see more of, for example, if there's, uh, singers performing during the service, could we see them? Not yet. We're working on it.
Thanks, Nancy.
You're welcome.
And I do know when we come back together, um, the cameras that we will have, that we will acquire will allow you to see, you know, obviously the stage or the altar area will be flipped and we'll be facing the congregation. So you'll get the, the backdrop, but I don't pretend to know how that works and how much detail you'll see behind, uh, the altar out the windows when we do that. Okay, Patty and Carol, Patty, you were first, and then Carol, you were second. Patty, do you still have something or no?
I was just going to say one possible way to show the, the view of the lake might be in one of those places where there's just background stuff going on like, um, yeah, just, uh, there are a number of places where we see a lot of pictures and, um, they're, they're, they're very good and they're very appropriate. But that, one of those places might be where we could put some pictures of the back.
We just don't have, we don't have the equipment yet.
I can come to you.
Don't have enough cameras.
And get some pictures that we can include.
Yeah. We have lots of pictures of the campus and of the scenery. If we're talking about showing those, um, Brad uses those a lot. We can use more, of course. If you're talking about a live shot of what we happen to be seeing that day, um, we just need more equipment and we're working on it.
So the short version is. So the short version is live shot, no, not yet.
I'm talking about still shots.
Yeah, yeah. Still shots is something we can, we can discuss. We could, again, we can look at, and some of the, most of the shots you're getting, uh, not all of them, but a chunk of them, because Ann's doing them now, are pictures that are of y'all or Austin or local shots of the lake. Maybe not be, not from our exact vantage point. But because Ann is a prolific photographer, a lot of what she's been using is local, uh, images. You just may, may or may not recognize that. Okay, Carol, final point on pictures and images and backdrops.
Well, Patty said exactly what I was going to say. Why not take still shots or I don't know how the videos might do, but just still shots of what we see out at the lake and the clouds and the buzzers floating by.
Yeah.
So Patty said, we were a lot of like mine.
Good. Something we can again, look at. So we, we will do that. Well, folks, I, um, I appreciate you. I'm thank you, thankful you joined us this morning. I will see you online and hopefully in person before too long. Uh, all you will hear going forward now is when we have a date to reopen, which we do not currently have one yet. Obviously cases are on the rise. Our plan has been submitted for approval on how we're going to do that. Uh, the next step would be approval and then getting volunteers in to be trained for the different duties. Uh, and then we can, we can get a Sunday, uh, on the calendar to say this is when we'll be back together. Um, I'm, I'm entertaining doing a soft opening with a small group of people. Uh, first, just to go through the actual mechanics of, of the reopen so that we, we have it somewhat streamlined. And then, uh, followed very quickly by full reopen, uh, with the number of services needed based on the number of people saying they're ready to come back. So you will not hear anything from me about reopening until that time happens. Uh, but do know that when I know, you'll know. I am not going to hold out on you. When I have the green light, uh, and when we, as we move through getting ready to reopen, you will know. And that is about all you will hear, uh, from me. We will not belabor COVID nineteen any longer. Um, unless we have something we need to talk about as it relates to reopening, you will hear when I know. And I look forward to that day, uh, to be together. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And y'all have a great, great, great Sunday.